We so love having a full house. So everybody, welcome to the February 28th, 2023 Board of Education meeting for Arlington Heights School District 25. And maybe today will be fun, too. Have with all the room today. Do please call the roll.
Member Conley?
Here.
Member Olanichak?
Here.
Member Sherniglia?
Here.
Member Jogi?
Yes, here.
Member Scapalato?
Here.
Member Philippeck?
Here.
Member Faso?
Here.
Add for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like I said, we love having a full house. So thank you to all of you for being here, all our little guests and big guests. The Board of Education is always pleased to recognize staff and community members who helped make District 25 the great place it is for our community. Tonight, we will recognize students who participated in the Arlington Heights Council of PTA's Reflections Art Program. Megan Worth, President-elect, Leppold Reflections Chairperson. Thank the students.
So we'd like to call our PTA exec members up. Thank you. Is this on? Is it on? Oh, good. Okay. I guess I'll stand here. Sorry, I don't know where to go. All right. Good evening. My name is Heather Leppold, and I am the Arlington Heights Council of PTA's Reflections Chair. Tonight, we are here to celebrate the accomplishments of our very own District 25 students who participated in this year's Reflections program. Reflections is a national PTA program that provides an opportunity for students to create original works of art in response to a student-related theme, and this year's theme was "Show Your Voice." This 50-plus-year-old program encourages children to explore their own thoughts, feelings, and ideas, develop artistic literacy, increase confidence, and find a love of learning that will help them become more successful in school and in life. We want to thank all students for their willingness and courage to share their talents, creativity, thoughts, and to show your voice. We would like to also thank PTA leaders and volunteers, parents, guardians, District 25 teachers, staff, principals, and administration for your support of Reflections this year and through in past years. We couldn't deliver this program without your support. At this time, we will call each participant up to receive their recognition. So please have the participants remain up here by the division and then until we call those names, and then they can be seated.
Okay, we will begin with participants in grades K through 2. Gannon Daly from Westgate. Sarah McCarty from Patton. Ashvi Parek from Patton. Ananya Parek from Patton. Ainsley Warner, Westgate. Beck Warner, Westgate. Okay, one more round of applause for our K through 2 divisions. Okay, you may be seated, okay? All right. Moving on to our intermediate division in grades 3 through 5. So when we call your name, just come on up. First, we have Amalene Burney. From Patton, and we have Michaela Carlson from Dryden. Amy Chang from Patton. Elsie Christensen from Greenbrier. Addie Daly from Westgate. Lila Davis from Greenbrier. Gabrielle Dzitsick from Westgate. Christina Horasidasis from Greenbrier. Jonah Katz from Greenbrier. Maxwell Lang from Westgate. Joanna Lau from Patton. Cassidy McCoen from Patton. Suhani Parek from Patton. Kurt Peterson from Greenbrier. Harshon Rajkumar from Ivy Hill. Joe Scapalato from Patton. Arv Singh from Ivy Hill. Ashwini Shrikant from Greenbrier. And Maya Zabirzini from Greenbrier. Okay, one last round of applause for our intermediate division. You can be seated. Thank you. And last, we have our middle school division, grades 6 through 8. Jayden Cantu from South Middle School. Amira Fatina from South Middle School. And Grant Heaton from South Middle School. That is all of our recognition tonight. Just so all of our participants know, we did bring your artwork. It is in the lobby, and we also wanted to take a group photo of everyone here tonight who participated in Reflections. And on behalf of PTA, this all could not be possible without Heather Leppold, who is our Reflections Chair for Council, and she has been for two years. So we just wanted to show our appreciation to Heather. Yes, for all of her hard work. So thank you so much. That's amazing. We're sort of all students, and you're so lucky. So many of your teachers out here. Congratulations again. And feel free to step away and go celebrate more with your parents at home. Go enjoy the celebration. Thank you so much for being here, and congratulations. Okay, testing? Yeah. I thought we didn't see the handsome blazer.
I wanted to introduce to the board Arav Singh from Thomas, who also is recognized in Reflections, and we did a call in the name.
Oh. Well.
And Arav, is your family here, too? Hello, Arav, family. Congratulations, Arav, for your recognition.
Yeah, I thought we had noticed the gentleman with the very handsome blazer, but didn't come up. So I'm glad he got a singular recognition. So congratulations to the parents as well. The room is so much more emptier now, but we're so glad you're here. We're going to be moving on to board member communications, and we'll start with board member updates. Do my colleagues have any updates that they'd like to share at this time? Everybody's looking good and enjoying the weather. Yeah. I have a couple of updates. The board was invited to attend, you know, as you know, Dr. David Schuler from District 214 is moving on to his next position. And so there was a kind of a celebration for him. So the board was invited, and it was a wonderful celebration with a really charming video that the staff put together for Dr. Schuler and all these people who came out to thank him. So that was a really nice celebration. And then also, the board is always, actually, the second part I'll mention later on, I'll mention with ISB. So if we don't have any other board member updates, we'll go on to Ed Red Rich and Stacy.
I have nothing other than we attended the dinner the other two sessions ago, but I wasn't here last time. So hopefully you guys talked about it. So I'll just pass at this point.
Ed Red did have a video meeting on the 23rd of February to talk about the new proposed TIF legislation. I believe actually Dr. Bine had had a conversation with the representative or the senator who submitted that legislation. But basically, some of the key proposed differences between the way TIFs run now and the way this legislation would change them would be changing them from 23 years to 20 years, eliminating five of the more subjective criteria used to allow to establish a TIF, and require more than one written indication from developers that they would not develop the property but for the fact that the TIF would be put into place. So it makes it more objective to the municipalities than what currently is. There would also be a percent of the TIF funds that would be allocated to the chambers of commerce to encourage small business development. And then, right now, the legislation includes an opt-out clause for school districts, and school districts make up about 65% of the tax revenue that goes into the TIF. So really, if the school district opts out, probably doesn't really make much sense for the TIF. The legislation would not affect existing TIFs. It would only be TIFs being established for the future. The executive committee is supposed to hear the bill on March 6th. So they're asking districts to file witness slips and reach out to your senators, asking them to have whatever vote they take be held at a hearing or be the conversation include a vote at the hearing, not just be a subject matter hearing for anyone who's interested.
Thank you, Stacy. If there's no questions for Stacy or Rich, we'll move on to ISB reports. So any other ISB? I have a couple of things, but I'll lean on my colleagues first.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
Well, I wanted to share just a little bit, and I imagine, Madam President, you have something to share about the book study that we just went through, the IASB book study, which is, is it annual? Help me out here. Thank you.
It is annual.
Yeah, annual. So this year was Amanda Ripley's book, High Conflict. And I don't think I could do it justice here in a brief time, but what I will say about the book is it was really compelling because she used real-world interviews from people from all walks of life and areas of the world. There was someone who had left the FARC rebels in South America. There was a former gang member from Chicago, a city council member from in California. And so all these different living examples about people that found their way into high conflict, and then how they found their way out, and the change that they went through. And the last session, there was three sessions in this book study, and the last one, the author was part of it. So it was great to see the questions and just interact with her personally through Zoom. But really worthwhile book study, but I'm sure you have more to add on that.
No, Greg is right. You know, the books, I highly recommend it to our community and to everybody, and we love Arlington Heights Memorial Library, right? And so they're actually on the Cloud Library app, they have it on audio. So please, if you're into these kind of books like we are, definitely check out High Conflict. They have it in paper copy at the library, and they also have it on audio. And it's just a really excellent read, especially from a space that we've come out of, right? During the pandemic and just as a country and as a community. And it really talks about the importance, like Greg was saying, the importance of good conflict. And I'm so proud of our board that we truly have this philosophy of having diverse perspectives and have this philosophy of having constructive conflict, because it's always really important to bring up diverse perspectives and not kind of hush those and be reserved in those comments, like really important to have those perspectives out there. And it's, and where good conflict, the difference between high conflict and good conflict is having a high level of trust, right? And sometimes really moving away from us versus them mentality. And the beauty of schools is that we're all here for our students, right? We're all here to support our students. And so we have that one common goal is our students. So to, you know, for different sections, it may be harder, the us versus them, but we have this commonality between all of us as the community members, parents, students, teachers, superintendent, board members. And Amanda Ripley is definitely, she actually narrates the book on Cloud Library, so you can hear her saying her book in her voice, which I thought was really powerful. And she's an excellent speaker because she was the keynote speaker at the Illinois Associated School Board's conferences in November as well. So I highly endorse that book, if you can tell, I'm a little gaga over it. Anything else, Greg? Or anybody else for ISB? NSEO, we're excited to hear some great.
Very excited. I want to start out with some news. The shining star for February was our very own Cole from Thomas Middle School. Cole transitioned back from NSEO's Timber Ridge School, which, when kids go to Timber Ridge, their ultimate goal is to be reintegrated back into their homeschool, which Cole did a spectacular job, and he did embrace the good that the Thomas Middle School likes to instill in the kids. And he was, he lived that model every day. Cole, if you were to walk in this room right now, probably you wouldn't recognize him, but he, the school mascot code to be broken, but he is the Thomas Timber Wolf at school events. So it's good to have him back in character. So he did give permission that we could share that, but he's excited to be back. Secondly, we had a few marathon sessions, one Saturday all day, and then three evenings of interviews for the next superintendent to take the torch from Dr. Hackett. So many qualified candidates that picking one was very, very tedious, but one has been chosen. The name is not being released yet until it is voted on by the board. That's going to be next week, March 7th, at the special board meeting. And then in April, at the regular board meeting, there's going to be a reception celebrating that hire. So next week's more of an administrative kind of meeting, but then the April board meeting is going to be the one that celebrates the new superintendent and inviting them in. But I'm sure and confident that the superintendent is going to be just as good, if not better, than Dr. Hackett, which is saying a lot. So I'm excited. It's a great time to be with NSEO. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott, for all the time and experience you're kind of getting under your belt as far as superintendent, kind of going through all the interview process. So that's excellent. Thanks for sharing that with us. And yeah, definitely big shoes to fill, right? So we're wishing her well, and we look forward to welcome the new superintendent at the reception, hopefully. So definitely keep us posted. Maybe we'll invite ourselves and we'll just come.
Everyone's invited. Everyone, everybody's invited. It should be a great time. You know, we like to have get-togethers, so it's good.
We're all about the treats. Thanks, Scott. Moving on, we're going to go, if we don't have anything else for NSEO, we'll go on to community input. And I'll remind our group here that the Board of Education has included a portion of the meeting for audience participation. Public comments will be held for a total of 30 minutes. In unusual circumstances, the board may extend the total time allotted. Ordinarily, the time for any one person to address the board during public participation is limited to three minutes. And in unusual circumstances, and when an individual has made a request to speak for a longer period of time, the person may be allowed to speak for more than three minutes. But board members should not, and of course, I'm reading from two different scripts today, I'm noticing, but this is more of a time for us to listen and really taking those perspectives. We take that very seriously. And you'll notice that on the public comments sheet, there's always a spot for you to, you know, now there's a spot for you to include your email and your phone number if you would like the superintendent to get in touch with you for more follow-up. So definitely take advantage of that. So thanks for the sheets, Lana, and we'll get started. So the first person, we have Sam Papas. And you'll notice something new today as well, is that we have the timer up in front of you, and so that we can, I can continue to do my responsibility of making sure I'm keeping time.
Hello and good evening. My name is Sam Papas. I live on Yale with my family and have been a resident of Arlington Heights since 1995. I'm here to discuss once again parental concerns with certain inappropriate books and other reading material that have been introduced into the school curriculum and school libraries in District 25. The current media policies are not working. The one-size-fits-all approach of giving children full unrestricted access to age, inappropriate content, including lewd, pornographic, and sexualized images, as well as extreme and divisive racist material, is not working. This content was promoted as part of the district's DEI policy, but it has achieved just the opposite effect. It is harming students. As I've mentioned in the past, I, along with many other parents, want a system in place whereby a parent or guardian can control what books and other reading material his or her own child, not someone else's children, can check out of the library or have access to. We are not here to censor books for other children. The technology is currently available and can be quickly implemented. District 214 already has such a policy and mechanism in place, so why can't District 25 do the same? I have heard from some parents and others, even certain D-25 board candidates, that we should put our trust and confidence in the professional, highly-educated school administrators and library staff, including the American Library Association, who know what's best and right for our kids. Don't be fooled. Parents first and foremost know what's best for their kids. Niels Bohr, a famous physicist, once said, "An expert is a man who has made all the mistakes which can be made in a narrow field." Edwin Mies, an attorney-in-law professor, once said, "An expert is somebody who is more than 50 miles from home, has no responsibility for implementing the advice he gives and shows slides." So next time you hear that, you should put your full, next time you hear that you should put your full faith and trust in the experts, take it with a grain of salt. French philosopher Rene Descartes even said, "I think, therefore I am." So think about what your kids are exposed to and take action. As I have stated many times, I do not believe children will self-police themselves on this matter. By the time a parent gets involved to screen or review a book that your child has brought home, it's too late. I heard a couple of people raise concerns about liability if a restricted book is obtained by a child who is not authorized to check it out. If our library staff, with the help of today's technology, do their job, this should not be an issue. Today's technology has come a long way. In conclusion, those who oppose protecting our kids are pushing their own agenda, and the consequences, including psychological harm, can be severe. Let's do more to protect our kids. As I have requested before, please put this proposal on your next board agenda and take immediate action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheila Cruz.
Thank you. I had, was here in January and couldn't stay the whole meeting, but I did watch the video. And I was surprised at how condescending Dr. Bine was to the parents and maybe some of you board members that don't have master's degrees, and her interpretation of what, who should have the authority to review books and recommend books for elementary school children. As a parent, I worked very hard to make sure my kids knew what was right and what was wrong, what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. And Dr. Bine, for you to say that the hate you give book was one of your favorite books, checked out multiple times by many children.
Sheila, I'm going to interrupt.
Surprises me.
Just hold one second.
Yes, please. Can you stop the clock, please?
Lana, if you could please stop the clock.
Yep, thank you.
I just want to remind the audience to please be respectful, and the guidelines are to please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or our staff. So definitely, if you want to have a one-on-one conversation with Dr. Bine, definitely set that up, but go ahead, Sheila, we'll get you, oh, we were able to stop the clock.
So I do appreciate that you are able to recognize that I have a voice, and I am concerned about what is going on in this school district and in this community. And for Dr. Bine to choose that book and recommend it as one of her favorite books really surprises me. As I was saying, I work hard to make sure my kids know what's right and what's wrong. And when they're young, when they're elementary age, we parents have that duty to make sure that they're accepted in the community and in society, and when to use appropriate words and when not to use appropriate words. And if I used the word fuck, my mother would wash my mouth out with soap. And if my kid brought that book home from school, I would have been the first one down here, making sure that there is a bar of soap for Dr. Bine, because that book and those words in that book should not be allowed at the elementary level. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Our next speaker is Kathy.
Hi, my name is Kathy Jo Horean. I've been a resident, in fact, we moved in, my family, in 1957. My husband and I and our family have been here since 1985. So I've been a longtime resident. My children went to District 25 schools. They were taught to read and write and learned math and science. Moral and social issues were discussed at home. I assumed our schools have the same moral compass as me. It never occurred to me that I needed to scour the school library for books that were not age or topic appropriate for a grade schooler. I assumed the books in the library supported the curriculum and the fiction had a positive moral lesson. Apparently, I assumed incorrectly. It was stressed multiple times at the January 10th meeting that only eight families had objections to 18 books currently available in our libraries. Perhaps the other parents are not aware of these books or assume, as I did, that the school would not have inappropriate topics or books not appropriate for K through eighth graders. The book "The Hate U Give" was published in 2017. It was one of the books mentioned at the January 10th meeting. It was stated that this book is a popular book with the students. Is popularity the criterion for judging whether a book should be in the library? I am not naive to think that sixth to eighth graders are unaware of the vulgar and profane words in the book. Perhaps, as Dr. Bine stated, it is a good book. But let's remember, Dr. Bine is an adult. Adults have more life experiences, social knowledge to understand, analyze, and grasp concepts. Is it legal to have books with profanity in our school libraries? Is the language and content in that book appropriate for sixth to eighth graders? Are the actions of the characters in that book something we want our children to emulate in our community? I don't think so. The school library is not a public library. It is not open to the public as our memorial library is. The school library serves K through eighth graders. Academic libraries serve the educational objectives and exist to serve the needs of its students. What needs are served with books like "The Hate U Give" and "The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian"? Are they age-appropriate and content-appropriate? I realize our library and media staff is highly qualified. Perhaps questionable books have slipped in without being fully vetted. Ultimately, we want to trust our schools. We want to believe the schools will put age and content-appropriate books into our school libraries. Can we just let our children be children? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Our next comment comes from Mr. William Pudrow. Welcome.
I had the pleasure of going to the Design Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Trustees with the faint hope that maybe the village would see fit to, if not go forward with the proposal to do the additions on the buildings, to at least take into account the fact that the flooding that was created back in 2007 as a result of the expansion of Dryden would be included within the remediation that goes with the stormwater within the most recent one. Unfortunately, it was a fait accompli. Not only did Westgate get approved, Dryden got approved, and I assume all the other ones will be approved. But what was interesting is I did learn certain things that were very interesting. First was that you don't have to rectify the situations that were created with stormwater prior to 2016. Prior to 2016, the school could do what they wanted. I also learned that the parking lot was supposed to be the retention area for the runoff from the stormwater. Well, I spoke to a builder who happened to be at the meeting, who spoke, John Elliott. And he informed me that the parking lot that's supposed to retain the stormwater doesn't because it is higher than the street. In addition, the parking lot has two driveways that go up. So the water just comes down and gets into the street. So that was interesting. Another thing that was interesting is that the expansion is probably going to remove the baseball field at Dryden. Now, I coached my son in third and fourth grade at Dryden. So there is supposed to be discussions, you know, of potentially having additional ballpark. But that's going to cost some money. So those two things were very interesting. The other thing is, is that one thing that I haven't heard from anybody, and it seems like the cost of these additions to the schools, and I feel empathy for the folks who live around the other schools because most of them have been expanded and probably have storm issues and flooding issues. But I haven't heard anything about the costs. We, and I looked at the Cook County School Bus, and their costs have gone up over 20% in one year. So the 75 million that was, that you are going to approve is probably up to about 90 million. So I'm wondering, and I address this question to Ms. Malik, who's not a board member, so I think she can answer this, is what are the current estimates now? Because you've got to be bidding on Dryden and Westgate as to what they were more than a year ago. You can stop the clock. I've got 12 seconds.
Yeah, so
She's not a member of the board. She can't answer that question?
No, at this point, we are doing public comments. We do listen, and you can definitely leave your email and your phone number, and Ms. Malik will get back to you and would be happy to meet with you as well.
Okay, I've got nine seconds. As far as the eight families and the 18 books, maybe what you should do is close the libraries, get rid of it, the redundant, to the public library, and then you don't get into the whole argument about appropriate, inappropriate. And you use the libraries for your new kindergartens. In fact, it's interesting, you've got 20, what is it, 25 classrooms in which you're not going to use any of them for the kindergarten program. Thank you.
Thank you, William. The next speaker is Jerry Berger. Yes, welcome.
So before I begin, I did ask to have a few extra moments. I may go 10 or 15 seconds over. Good evening. I'm Jerry Berger, and I've been an employee of District 25 since 1996, currently serving as a full-time guest teacher, and I'm stationed at Windsor. I'd like to start by taking a moment to acknowledge the fine teachers, TAs, and staff members we are blessed to have here in District 25. Since my return to service last February, I have had the privilege of seeing many, many extraordinary teachers in action across this district. These professionals care deeply for their students and creatively strive to meet their needs on a daily basis. My work as a district guest teacher has allowed me the opportunity to teach general music, band, art, PE, to be a TA, they are truly the heroes in my book, and to teach in kindergarten through fifth-grade classrooms. This has definitely been a growth experience for me and has helped me to develop a greater level of respect and admiration for the work that administrators, teachers, and support staff do each day. For that, I thank you all, and I'm grateful. And I'd like to especially thank Dr. Kay and his staff for being so good to me in the last year or so. I'd like to direct the following comments to the staff, students, and families of the Westgate community. My purpose in speaking here is to go on record that I have attempted to write a situation that happened in the fall of 2021. I recently participated in a district book study, "Fostering Resilient Learners", by Kristin Sowers and Pete Hall. I have learned much from this book, especially about the effect words can have on others, how trauma affects us all, and six communication steps to help build connection and trust. These steps are: listen, reassure, validate, respond, repair, and resolve. My time at Westgate as the music teacher came to an end on Friday, September 24th, 2021. That morning, knowing that I would not be allowed on school grounds the following week due to COVID restrictions, I attempted to respectfully and carefully explain to students in fourth and fifth grade why I wouldn't be there. My heart was to say goodbye because I believed I wouldn't be back. As it turned out, I was right, but I wish I would have simply taught my classes and gone home. While I do not regret taking a stand for what I believe was important, an idea that is celebrated in this district, I do regret the effect my words had on some students and families. I did not anticipate that my words would cause hurt, upset, and confusion, nor did I wish to create a disruption in the school. That was not my intention. So to my former colleagues and friends and to those affected by my words, I am truly sorry. I know, I now know through this book study that I was operating out of my downstairs brain that day. I even broke down in tears a few times as I tried to let the students know that I would miss them and to encourage them to be kind to whoever the district brought in to take my place. The book talks about being a safe enough person in the lives of one's students. I always prided myself on that, though I have certainly made mistakes in my 25 years in this district. My hope is that by offering a public apology and, as Kristin Sowers put it, initiating a repair, perhaps those in the Westgate community who were harmed by my words can find it in their hearts to accept my apology and to move forward in a positive way. I can say with certainty that I have learned a valuable lesson about the weight of my words and that this will not happen again in the future. I'd like to regain that trust and safe enough status, but I realize it will take time and perhaps a few tough conversations. I'm open to those six steps of communication, if you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. The board truly appreciates everybody's comments and everybody who spoke this evening.
Melissa Care speaking. Open, rent, school, avoid building additions, and redistrict and implement school choice. Arlington Heights has dense housing units, which causes water management issues. The referendum was, "Shall the Board of Education of Arlington Heights School District Number 25, Cook County, Illinois, improve the sites of build and equip additions to and alter, repair, and equip existing buildings, including, without limitation, building classrooms for full-day kindergarten and replacing windows, flooring, roofing, plumbing, electrical equipment, and HVAC systems, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of 75 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof? HVAC stands for heating, ventilation, air conditioning. Also, the the vote for it was, "School District 25 issue bonds." Yes was 5,227 votes, no, 5,177 votes. All right, I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Lana, would you like Melissa to fill out a blue slip for you for the records? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to communications from district partners, and we start off with our friends from PTA. Nicole will be reporting. Thanks, Nicole.
I'm myself in this microphone tonight, I don't know. Okay, good evening. The PTA would like to thank the Board of Education for providing us with the opportunity to recognize our reflections recipients this evening. We are so lucky to be surrounded by talented children throughout District 25. We would also like to thank each school's PTA and all of the volunteers who had planned fun and exciting Valentine's Day celebrations for the students. Party planning takes time and effort, and we are so grateful for our volunteers who came together and created all the Valentine's Day fun for our kids. In scholarship news, we have received over 60 high school student applications for the Arlington Heights Council of PTA Scholarship Program this year. I believe that is a council record. Yes. We are looking forward to choosing our recipients and celebrating our winners in late April. We, as a PTA, are also excited for a busy spring and all the fun that awaits us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicole. I know that all of us love seeing all the pictures and Twitter feeds and the storytelling that Adam does. And so so many fun Valentine's memories were shared. And I was actually in a fourth-grade classroom doing a stacking cups game. There was a lot of energy. And what I was thinking about while I was there is how the teacher, you know, we're there just for like 20 minutes, 30 minutes, and then, you know, as volunteers, we head out of the classroom. But the teachers continued to keep up with this amazing energy that's in the classroom and the creativity. And half an hour and I was like, ooh. And but the teachers are going to keep going, and they do this every single day. So I so appreciate all our educators who have fun every single day in our classrooms. And the board is very excited as well, Nicole, as far as our scholarship, celebrating our scholarship recipients, and we look forward to be at the reception as well. Moving forward, let's go on to ABC 25 Foundation with our very own Gina Faso reporting.
Sticking with the theme of talented students, ABC 25 congratulated Aradi, a fourth grader at Ivy Hill, for winning the ABC 25, and I apologize, I'm referencing the website if you guys would like to look, for winning our T-shirt design for this year's ABC 25 Get Verb Challenge. So there was Fan Fair at Ivy Hill this week as he was presented with his design framed, as well as balloons and recognition for his work. And it is, he did an incredible job on it. And if anyone would like to see a preview of the T-shirt, you're welcome to check it out at the ABC 25 Get Verb Challenge website. Of which, that challenge this year, we're inviting runners and walkers of all ages and abilities to participate in the challenge of either a 5K or a one-mile walk or run fundraising event that will combine fitness and fun for the entire family. So if you would like information on it, please see the website or any of the social media sites at this point, because we've now pushed it out everywhere. And just a reminder that all the proceeds from the benefit go to the foundation, which is an independent, nonprofit volunteer organization that raises funds for innovative learning initiatives that are not otherwise supported by our district funds. The foundation uses the proceeds from this year's event for next year's educational grants provided to the teachers across our district.
Thank you so much, Gina. So much, so many fun things happening. I have a question for our board member friend, Scott, if he's going to be the DJ at the run again this year.
If you'd many plans, I will, this year, but yes, I would be there.
Okay, that's so fun. We're excited to participate as a board and listen to lower music from DJ Scott. And the T-shirt, Gina, is pretty, it's super creative. It's very cool. So and the community voted for it, and so I remember voting too. So I won't say which one I voted for, but I really liked that T-shirt a lot as well. So thanks, Gina. Moving on, we'll have our ATA and our educator, Allison, come up, please.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time always to share a little bit about what's going on in District 25. Actually, need the other slideshow first, guys. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to speak this evening. I just want to highlight some things that are going around throughout District 25. And then I'm going to go ahead and shine that spotlight on Greenbrier, hence my Gator shirt today. I would like to just take a minute to highlight some of the things going around, going on around the district and highlight Black History Month, which is during February, today, the last day of February, and some other multicultural activities going on as well. If you, oh, never mind, it's me, I have it. Sorry. There we go. Second graders at Dryden learned all about Martin Luther King Jr. and wrote some biographies about him. And there they are, hanging in the hallway. Windsor School, nope, I'm going the wrong direction. If I would tell you that I have a degree in technology. You got it? Thanks. You can stop right there for just a second. Okay, Windsor School is having a multicultural week, beginning the week of March 6th. So I'm a little bit ahead of it. The PTA Cultural Arts Committee is kicking off the week by hosting the Adeli, West African Drum Assembly for all students. And on Thursday, March 9th, from 6:30 to 7:30, families have been invited to create a tri-fold board to showcase their family traditions. All teachers have also participated in creating a board about their own family traditions as well. Fourth-grade students will be performing, using the African drums at this event. And in addition to the multicultural week, Windsor also has a special bulletin board located near our front office that families have put together to feature holidays and other important people throughout the year. So I just wanted to take a second just to showcase. These are some of our posters. You can go through them. Thanks. Should I try it myself? No. So this is Mrs. Warner's poster. She's So this is Mrs. Warner's poster, she's a teacher at Windsor School and these are some of the things and traditions that are important to her family. And if we can move on, Ms. Locke tells where her family is from and some of her traditions and that food is very important to her family. Again, Mrs. Stella is another teacher at Windsor School and all the important things for her family. Ms. Kuchin is one of our TAs and again, talking about where she comes from and the important traditions in her family. And then, Mrs. Ravinewitz, another one of our teachers. All the teachers at Windsor School made a poster. We've encouraged all of our families to make one as well so that they'll be hanging throughout the whole Commons area during our multicultural evening. You can keep going. These are our fourth grade students practicing the African drums, ready to go for their big performance. And these are some of the posters that are hanging right outside our office that families also made. This one focuses on women's equality. You can keep going, thank you. Another one about disability awareness, another one about Rosh Hashanah, which is a Jewish holiday, the Jewish New Year, the Day of the Dead, which is an important holiday for some of our kids, Diwali, which is another one that is celebrated by many of our students, National Hispanic Heritage Month. This one is National Poverty in America Awareness, so just to shine a spotlight on that cause as well, Martin Luther King Jr. And then outside our LMC, we focused on all the different languages that were spoken in the World Cup, just to kind of shine a light on all the things that are going on at Windsor School. So pretty cool. Okay, thank you. And now to talk about Greenbrier, five reasons that we love Greenbrier School, what's not to love about Greenbrier School. So the first thing I'd like to focus on is the Kids' Heart Challenge, which was a huge success at Greenbrier. Mr. Hellman and the students of Greenbrier took the challenge very seriously and fundraised for this amazing cause last year. They won, we won the Finns Mission Challenge against other schools. This year, the students have raised over $25,000, which is awesome. You can keep going. Administrative assistance is something to love at Greenbrier. They're lucky to have the best administrative assistants at Greenbrier. Amanda Spence and Karen Pilly make sure all of the guest teachers are set for a day at Greenbrier, always having a smile on their face, lucky to have those ladies in their front office. The Early Childhood Program is something unique to Greenbrier School, if you didn't already know this. They house the district's Early Childhood Program. I'm actually the mother of three children who graduated from there. I couldn't say enough great things about it as a sidebar. Our youngest students come to learn while having fun. You can step into any of the eight EC classrooms and you'll find students engaged in activities, story time, playtime, music, movement, sensory, I even believe they cook, which is pretty cool. Friday, March 3rd is Greenbrier's annual talent show at Thomas Middle School. It's a night of fun and dancing. Teachers have been working hard and practicing their routines for the big event and they can't wait to see their performances by staff and the talented students. And finally, what school could not be more proud of their mascot? Chompers is Greenbrier's mascot and not only does our friendly Gator have lots of energy, but Chompers brings a smile to all the students and staff at every school event. So those are the five greatest things about Greenbrier and I thank you for giving me an opportunity to share it. Next month, I will talk about South. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much, Allison, for always kind of giving us a kind of a view of what's happening in our schools and all the fun things that are happening and definitely the Black History Month celebrations that are happening, the multiculturalities. I thought it was really cool for the teachers to share and what a great community building where the families are sharing their cultural traditions as well. So it really neat, so we'll have to, as a board, walk around and appreciate those posters.
Yeah, please, I'm checking out Thursday night, I can follow up with the pictures of the weekend after.
Okay, Thursday night, got it. Thank you, Allison. Okay, moving on, we have a, we are going to move into the approval of the consent agenda items. This is an action item. Can I have a motion, please, and a second?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report. B, treasures report. C, invoices. D, fixed asset disposal report. E, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of January 24th, 2023. F, hold closed session minutes of July 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2022 and November 15th, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 per Board Policy 2:20-E1. G, release closed session minutes of November 7th, 2022 per Board Policy 2:20-E1. H, destruction of audiotapes, January 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021 per Board Policy
Thank you, Greg. Lana, could you please call the vote?
I second it.
Oh, yes, please second. Thank you for the second. And now Lana, can you please call the vote?
Member Olenechek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lana. Now we move on to the superintendent's report with an update on our FOIA responses.
Thank you. The board has in front of them the, I believe there were seven Freedom of Information Act requests since our last meeting and it shows you the dates that each of those were responded to.
Thank you, Dr. Byn. And our next item from Dr. Byn is about a teacher partnership with Bellwood School District 88 and we welcome her colleague Superintendent Dr. Hanson. We have been waiting for this day and we're so excited you're here and we get to hear about all this great collaboration and partnership and learning that's been going on.
And then you have a controller or you want to, if you. You?
I volunteer. As well, my friend and colleague, Dr. Victoria Hanson, superintendent of Bellwood School District 88. Dr. Hanson and I have been talking about teacher partnership experience for a couple of years. Additionally, the board may know I've been workshopping through an idea, oh, thank you. See if it works. I've been workshopping this idea with the Arlington Heights Chamber of Commerce's Diversity Group over the last couple of years as well, getting their thoughts and input along the way. And I'd like to just say a quick appreciation to our small business owners that are a part of that Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Group that have really been providing me with a lot of great insights, a lot of great questions. They've been very helpful. And so Dr. Hanson and I are excited to share our plans with the Board of Education. We have shared these plans with the District 88 Board of Education recently and they were extremely receptive and really appreciated the opportunity to work with Dr. Hanson in presenting to them. The purpose of this trial partnership is to give a small group of our teachers the experience teaching in different communities with different student demographics, with different staff demographics. And during this experience, we'll have teachers from District 25 having a partner in District 88 and together they'll view their experience through an equity lens, identifying similarities and differences, sharing ideas for instruction, student engagement and differentiation and sharing their expertise. They are the experts on working with our children and sharing that expertise with each other. So tonight, we're going to talk through briefly, again, the purpose of our program. We're going to tell you a little bit about District 88 and review some of the statistics about the demographics in District 25 and even more importantly, who we are together and how many similarities. Dr. Hanson has spent a day here in District 25. She's met many staff, many PTA leaders. She went to lunch with some community members here in District 25 and spent a lot of time interacting with students. I also have had the pleasure of spending time in District 88 and meeting the amazing staff and the students there as well. And we realize how similar we are as well as when you look at the demographics, we may look different on paper, but we have amazing staff, committed families and really engaged students. We're going to talk a little bit about the scope of the partnership, what will happen, and then our next steps following this experience. We're starting with the theme of teachers who teach together, learn together. We all have these amazing experts in our schools and a lot of places that do professional development outside of our district, but we find that some of the best, thank you, staff development is when our teachers have the opportunity to share with each other. So the purpose of our program that I mentioned briefly, but I'll review, is for teachers in our two districts to learn together by co-teaching in each other's classrooms. They'll be using an equity lens to identify similarities and differences that impact the teaching experience. Our teachers will get to share ideas for instruction, student engagement, student differentiation, equity, and how they connect with their communities. In District 88, Dr. Hanson talks about elevating who they are as a district and I love that. I think we can all be working on elevating who we are as a district. And she introduced the three Es in her district, which I love and we will incorporate into this program as well, excellence, equity and engagement. There's a couple of thoughts that we came up with that just seem to really apply here. Again, we as in District 25 have done a lot of work in equity. We've had some outside presenters, we've done some book studies, lots of small pieces, small steps, but we really felt it was time for this quote, dipping your toe into the water isn't going to make a splash, you have to jump in. And I appreciate Dr. Hanson and her school district's agreement to allow us to jump in together, to walk in each other's classrooms, to share ideas together, to work with each other's students, to really kind of immerse ourselves in each other's school districts. And again, in learning, you will teach and in teaching, you will learn. We know that by having our group of teachers learn from each other, they will be able to even teach more widely, better in all ways moving forward. So at this time, I'm going to ask my colleague to kind of give you a little bit of sense of what Bellwood District 88 is like.
Thank you, Dr. Byn, excuse me. First off, thank you, Dr. Byn, for the introduction and as well as this board. Thank you all so much for having me this evening and to all the community members that are here today. Really appreciate it. Look forward to this partnership. As Dr. Byn said, we are really excited in Bellwood as well. So a little bit about us, we are just about 25 minutes east of here. I drove right from school, from the school district and so it took me about 25 minutes to get here. So we're not that far away. We have seven schools across six different communities. So we are very unique. We carry the name of Bellwood School District 88, but we actually serve as students across six different communities, which is located in Proviso Township. And so as you can look at the slide presentation and you see our student demographics, we are majority-minority districts, so most of our student population is made up of Black and Hispanic students. As far as our staff, as you can see, we're a little bit more diverse there. We have 51% white, 31% black, 15% Hispanic and 2% with two or more races. So a little bit more diversity as it relates to our staff, but we again, we are always thinking about ways in which we can bring equity to the forefront when we're educating our students from those diverse communities. So we are a real small district, seven schools, as I mentioned, about 2,300 students, but again, when Dr. Byn and I have been talking about this partnership, our teachers got really excited about just the opportunity to grow and learn together. As she mentioned, when we did our walkthroughs in both districts, we learned, oh my goodness, we are more alike than we are different. And that was really, it really made us feel good about the work that we do, you know, both collectively together that we've done, but also that we do also in our various and respective communities and districts. So that's a little bit about Bellwood. I was telling her today that as soon as I put out the memo to my staff, I had six teachers immediately sign up to be a part of this partnership. So we are really eager and excited to learn from you all as well. We also feel like that there's going to be so much that we can learn through this partnership. So that's just a little bit about Bellwood. Excited to tell you all and share more as we continue to build upon this partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. And as you can see, the motto of District 88 is, we're all in this together and their hashtag is 188. And I share that because we'll show you how those connect and you know, here in District 25, our motto is, together today to transform tomorrow and our hashtag being, hashtag D25, it's personal. You're well aware of our student demographics and our staff demographics, but we're just kind of sharing that up there as a visual. Those numbers overall are very different than the demographic numbers in Bellwood 88. But when we combine our two school districts, we love that this fits so well. Their motto, we're all in this together and ours, together today to transform tomorrow. And you'll see the, kind of the links at the top. Adam Harris and Jillian from District 88 have worked together to create our, create our own little visual of how our districts tie together.
Dr. Byn, if I could just jump in and just talk a little bit about the hashtag 188, that was something when I became superintendent I coined because as I mentioned, we have seven schools, but we're across six different communities. So we really want to bring this whole, this, you know, uniting the schools together that at the end of the day, we are 188. And so as she and I were talking, it was just such a natural fit, that togetherness, that, you know, the belonging, that camaraderie that we feel like our teachers will be able to build with one another, which again, is how our districts, we feel, are aligned.
Thank you. So this is a slide, we showed you kind of the difference in our demographics, but the more we talked and the more we met each other's districts, the more we realized we had a lot of similarities. Some of those include, we both have very dedicated and skilled teachers and staff who care about educating the whole child. We both have involved and supportive families who consider the school a central part of their community. Boards of Education who are committed to providing the best educational experience for all students. Students who are eager to learn and eager to be a part of their school community. Administrators who are focused on supporting teaching and learning and growth for adults and for students. And a commitment to a diversity, equity and inclusion journey. Dr. Hanson, will you talk a little bit about kind of our plans?
Absolutely. So we're going to kick off this spring, our plan is to kick off in April and it'll be a total of 12 teachers, so six teachers from Bellwood, six teachers from Arlington Heights. We're going to do some pre-reading activities where we'll talk about equity and some of those courageous conversations that sometimes people feel a little uncomfortable with having, but we're going to, like Dr. Byn said, we're going to just jump right in. We're going to dip our toe right in the water. And so, and talking about best practices, right? I learned that when, when I first became principal, I was principal of a school that was predominantly Hispanic and I'm not Hispanic, but what I learned through that experience was is best practices are best practices for all kids. You know, we had to have that, that lens to focus on students with, that were second language learners, but you know, as a person who didn't speak that language, you know, as I learned more about the school, I learned, hey, these are best practices, these are going to be best practices for all students and for all children. So we're really excited about that. We're also going to do a partner and do like a professional development day where again, as Dr. Byn mentioned, we're going to give our teachers an opportunity to learn about equity and learn about some of the work that they need to do to really open up and broaden their lens. We'll have three days of co-teaching that'll take place in Bellwood and then three days in Arlington Heights and then we'll do like a thought partner reflection day where we really just kind of reflect and talk about our experiences together. What were the benefits? What were the pros? What were the cons? What did we gain? What did we learn from this experience? And really be able to just have that moment to reflect, right? To have that moment to really reflect about what this partnership really means to all of us as education, educational professionals.
So following those days in the spring, again, a initial day for our staff to get together, to learn together, to meet each other, to build some connections, to plan for their time together, those six days in classrooms and then that follow-up day of celebrating and reflecting on the experience. Dr. Hanson and I will be gathering input from those participants on the impact of the experience. Did it impact their teaching? Did it impact how they engage with students and families and colleagues? If all goes as well as we believe it will be, we really believe this will be a very transformational experience for the staff who participate. And if that's the feedback that we get, then we'll consider expanding the experience. We want to start small and kind of a pilot size, just to make sure we have everything in place to make this as beneficial an experience as possible. We'll be coming back to the Boards of Education to present the outcomes. What has our staff reported? What have we learned from it? And we're going to support those participants that are stepping forward to be a part of this program and helping them provide PD to their teacher colleagues, helping them share what they learned, what caught their attention, what surprised them, what reinforced what they do with their colleagues in their schools. And we'll look at possibly applying to present it statewide and national conferences about our action research and the impact that it has had. As I said, we are super excited. Here is Here is the logo that's been created tying us together, again, using "We're All in This Together" and "Together Today to Transform Tomorrow." We've put a lot of work behind the scenes, again, a couple of years of really fleshing this out. We've got great plans for the opening professional development day for these 12 teachers, a really great day of engagement and purposeful planning and being thought partners together. And so, we're looking forward to, as Dr. Hanson said, getting started in April and coming back to the board, probably more towards the end of the school year to share our experience. We're happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Byne and I are sharing today, which is important. Thank you so much, Dr. Byne and Dr. Hanson. This has been really, we're so excited to comment and ask questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues first, but thanks for the presentation. And I also want to introduce Jillian, who was introduced to me as the Adam Harris of Bellwood School District 88. Welcome, Jillian, and thank you for all the, I know it takes a lot of creative energy to put together this link and so forth. It looks great. Okay. Comments and questions from my colleagues?
Madam President.
Yes, Gina.
This sounds really exciting. Can you talk a little bit about the 12 teachers, and was it strictly volunteer, and do we have across both the elementary as well as the middle school grades?
Yes. Yes, we have it across elementary and middle school. We are trying to partner the closest in grade level as we can. We haven't reached out here yet in District 25 to share with the board first, but we'll in this week, reach out and see what interests there is and ask for volunteers. I suspect, to be honest with you, Dr. Hanson got, filled her slots like in moments. That will have many, many more. I've already heard, people have already heard a little bit about it and say, how do I do it? How can I be a part of it? So, we're going to have to go with six to start, and then if all goes well, we'll look at expanding.
Seeing no other questions and comments, I'm jumping, you know, the 188, it's great that this coincidental kind of slogans coming together. That's right. So, as a researcher, I have heard so many great things about courageous conversations. And the import, I know District 214, District 224 here, really jumps into courageous conversation. And exemplary groups across the state of Illinois are looking at the tips, the skills that courageous conversations gives us to have, what we talked about earlier, the importance of that open communication and learning. So, that's excellent that you're doing that. I have a question. Are there other districts who do this partnership?
We are the first that we know of. We, I shared it recently at a North Cook superintendent's meeting as we were all talking about our equity journey and how it's a challenging journey. It's not a smooth journey, and everybody trying to get started but feeling stuck, and where do we go? And so, we each shared what we were doing, and I shared this, and most of my colleagues in North Cook also know the strong leadership reputation of Dr. Hanson, and so they first commented, "You're so lucky you get to work with Dr. Hanson."
Thank you.
But then they all were very interested in, "Tell us about it. How are you doing it? Will you please report out?" So, we are not aware of this occurring.
And it's funny, because Dr. Byne and I didn't talk about that, but I was similarly on a West Cook call, and, because I'm a part of West Cook County, and I also shared, I didn't disclose that it was Arlington Heights, but, because I wanted to have this presentation first, but I was talking about it, and they were like, I was getting follow-up emails, "Please tell us more. Can you tell us how we can, you know, share in this opportunity?" So, I imagine once we sort of publicize that this is what we're doing, and as she mentioned, once the action research is out, and we really have some outcomes from this partnership, I imagine that other districts will try to jump on board.
I'm so excited that you guys are going to present at the state level. That's really important. As far as, I brought another book, right? There's a book called Innovate DNA, and it talks about the importance of getting diverse perspectives getting to the table, and we do this across industry where, you know, now the fact that we're doing this across districts, so much learning and so much richness that's going to come out of this. You're definitely trailblazers. We're very proud of our two superintendents in the room today. Thank you for your leadership in this work, which is kind of like, you know, trailblazing effort in Illinois. So, we're excited that District 25 is part of this with you.
And thank you so much. And I will just say that my board echoes those same sentiments, so we feel really honored and blessed to also partner with you all as well. I thank you all for the opportunity and for the warm reception tonight. Thank you.
Of course. And one last thing I'm going to say, the fact, you said that it took you 25 minutes to get here, right? And it's such a benefit, because our mission here in District 25 is to cultivate global citizens. So, we don't have, right? Our students are going to go 25 minutes away, they're going to go 30 minutes, they're going to go across the oceans and across the globe, and so the fact that we have this opening our viewpoint right here is amazing. So, thank you so much for helping with our mission as well.
Appreciate that, and Dr. Byne can share with you all, but I could sit here and talk for hours about this, because we've spent, as she mentioned, years talking about this and planning, and just talking about, you know, this work is so important. It's so important that we do this so that our children can, you know, learn from these experiences that we're going to be able to share with them along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate both of our District 88 colleagues coming tonight. Please don't feel that you have to stay for the whole meeting, but we appreciate you being here. I'll also just say for the board, you mentioned, Dr. Jogi, the importance of the courageous conversation program. All 40 of our District 25 administrators will be going through a year's worth of courageous conversation training in the next school year.
Amazing things happening. Thank you. And you had earlier said that you guys met for dinners. I hope you are here today or another day, so we have great restaurants in Arlington Heights, so if you're going to, we welcome you to stay and go enjoy.
I'm familiar.
So.
I'm going to walk them out.
So, we, moving on, we don't have a student learning report today, neither do we have student services, but we'll move on to business and finance, an extension of bus transportation contract. This is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the extension of the bus transportation contract with Cook County School Bus Company for 2023, 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Please, may I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Brian. Stacy, if you could please provide your information on the bus transportation contract?
So, under school code, when we go out to bid for bus transportation, we can enter in up to a three-year agreement, which we did. Then, the next renewal can be for two years, which we did, and then after that, you can only renew on a year-to-year basis. So, we've done that for the last couple of years, and I'm proposing that we do that again for next year. You have the information regarding the increases that our bus company is seeing, but they continue to struggle with hiring in the current environment, so they are planning additional, the most significant portion is they're planning a 19% pay increase for their drivers and staff for next year. My colleagues and I are all facing this kind of increase throughout a lot of our neighboring districts, so we've all connected on the types of increases regardless of the bus company that are being proposed. There's anywhere from 19%, 16%, 13.5%, the lowest is an 8.5%. Cook did come in originally higher, but I was able to negotiate with them and remind them of our good faith during the last couple of years. So, based on, again, the information that you have, knowing what we're hearing from other districts in terms of, you know, we this year didn't have issues that we couldn't cover with bus drivers. There are neighboring districts that are down 20, District Schaumburg 54 is down like 20-something routes, because they just don't have enough drivers. So, they've just told parents they have to find ways to get their kids to school. We haven't been in that situation with this company at this point, so I am recommending that the board accept this renewal for next year.
Okay. Thank you so much, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy?
Madam President.
Yes, Rich.
Stacy, just a quick question. I know even in the discussion here, we've been at this for eight years. At what point do we say we have a new contract to get back to where we can have a three-year term or something like that?
Honestly, it's typically A, if you're dissatisfied with your current provider; B, if you are reached out to by another provider, or you are aware that other providers are interested in bidding on your work. Right now, districts that are going out to bid are finding they're not getting competitive bids, and their company is coming in with even higher rates, because it's a forced bid, and they need to meet their interests as well. So, it's more of the economic environment that we would make that decision, because the problem is you have to go with the lowest responsible bid, and that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the same level quality of service, as well as sometime, last time we did go out to bid, we only got two bids. And the other company came in with some very different rates, where it actually took me probably a week to literally lay out all of our routes, all of their rates, figure it all. They had, if the route was more than, you know, a half hour, they charged this extra. If it's more than an hour, they charged this extra. So, I had to time all our routes and do a lot of figuring, and while upfront, it looked like it was going to be less expensive, when I actually laid it all out, it would have been more expensive. So, again, a lot of factors. I mean, we can go out at any time we want. I would suggest this is not the environment that we want to be going out to bid in.
Thank you so much, Stacy. Any other questions, comments? Lana, can you please call the vote?
Member Shniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippak?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichuk?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to go to facilities management, and this is an action item for the 2023 and 2024 facilities capital improvement projects approval. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the intended 2023 and 2024 facilities capital improvement projects as presented.
Thank you, Greg. Please have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Stacy, please, can you provide the information on the 2023, 2024 facilities capital improvement projects?
Yes. So, Ryan was at the Village Design Commission tonight. So, as typical, Ryan presented the five-year rolling capital plan last winter, November, December. And then, as we do every year, we asked the board to allow us to move forward with the projects we're considering for the upcoming summer, meaning basically developing the design specs. A lot of these projects have to go out to bid, so those bids would then come back to the board for a final vote, but this would allow us to move forward and incur those design, architecture, or engineering costs. Additionally, unlike in the past, we're asking for approval to move forward with that on both this summer's upcoming projects as well as 2024, because Ryan has coordinated and moved around some of the projects in the five-year plan to align with the anticipated schedule for the building addition, so that we get that, you know, one-time mobilization cost for the trades once they're on the property, more of the economies of scale. So, this would be for both these summers, but again, a lot of these projects would possibly be bid in addition to, along with the building addition work, or independently, but still come back to the board for a bid award in the future.
Stacy, any questions for my colleagues?
Okay. Just a quick comment. It was really great for board members, some of us were able to attend the village board meeting where Ryan presented, just the plan in general, and of course, the budget and everything came up a little bit as well. So, we really appreciate Ryan's expertise, and the village board really appreciated his presentation and unanimously voted for it, so that was very exciting for us. So, if we don't have any other questions, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippak?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichuk?
Yes.
Member Shniglia?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Lana. I will now move on to personnel and planning with the SEIU contract approval. This is an action item. Have a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated agreement between Arlington Heights School District 25 Board of Education and Service Employees International Union Local 73 as presented.
Thank you so much. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. And now, other Brian, Dr. Kay, could please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I want to thank the board for allowing me to share some information with you regarding the recent negotiations that took place with the Service Employees International Union Local 73, otherwise known as the SEIU. The Board of Education negotiations team consisted of Brian Shniglia, Stacy Malik, Ryan Schulz, Dan Mendoza, and myself. And the SEIU employees that participated on the negotiations team were John Betaglia, Roger Hughes, Ron Miller, and Fred Wimmer. The board and SEIU negotiating teams began in October, starting on October 25, and we met three additional times to come to a consensus on our new contract. The negotiation process could be described as being respectful and cordial, and as an opportunity to look at our overall needs in Arlington Heights School District 25 with the facilities department. The administration genuinely appreciates the service of our facilities and maintenance staff and recognizes that their efforts continue to help distinguish our school district as a place of excellence. I am excited to present a five-year contract to you this evening. This contract continues to examine the fiduciary needs of our school district and allows us to continue to be fiscally responsible to our local constituents. The length of this contract also allows us to track our expenditures for this particular group, and will highlight five additional years of collaboration with the SEIU members. As far as the wages go, in the first year of the contract, we are adding for the Group Four maintenance group, $1.75 per hour; for all other groups, $2.50 per hour. In the second year, '24-'25, we will add $1.75 per hour for Group Four and $2 per hour for all other groups. In the three final years of the contract, '25-'26, '26-'27, and '27-'28, it will be tied to the Consumer Price Index with a floor and a ceiling. Other items within the language that we negotiated that I want to highlight, we added a mid-school day, or middle school midday shift that starts at noon and goes till eight. It is a practice we've already had in place, but it was not officially in the contract, so this allows us to make it official. Shift assignments, when we shift employees from one assignment to the next, we wanted to give them 48 hours notice in advance of a shift notice, so that they can get some rest at night if we move them from a night shift to a day shift. So, we negotiated on behalf of allowing them to get the sleep they need if we shift their assignment. The floater custodian, also, we negotiated language that allows us 48 hours advance notice if we need to shift their assignment as well. And one last one is vacation. Our first-year employees are unable to utilize any vacations, so they're earning throughout their entire first year. So, what we've negotiated in the language is to allow them to use up to five, or request up to five, vacation days in their first year, which will be given to them when they complete year one, but they will be able to request up to five days of unaccrued vacation. We are pleased with the contract. We have negotiated with our SEIU group and feel that the contents of the contract are a win-win for both groups. At this time, I recommend that the board approve the negotiated agreement between the board and the SEIU Local 73 as presented. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, I want to thank I want to thank everybody who worked so hard on the SEIU contract, including my colleagues, Brian Serniglia and Greg. Thank you so much. So no comments, so we can move on to a vote, right? So Lana, please, could you call a vote?
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichuk?
Sorry.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes. Okay. To go on to the second community input. Oh, there comes someone, yep.
Thank you, Dr. K.
Yes, thank you, Dr. K. Yeah, if you wish, agenda, please complete the forms provided. So it's only one, correct, Lana?
Yes. Okay. Good question.
Yeah, just let, yeah, sure, you're welcome to Sheila. So Sam, please join us on the mic again. Thank you, Sam.
I didn't get a chance to really bring this up, and I, I know that IAR is, Illinois Assessment of Readiness exam is coming up in March, March 7. So I didn't see that anywhere on this agenda, and I think that's, that should be a prime focus of the school district, the superintendent, and the entire Board. I mean, really, it's, it's really, when it boils down to economics, I mean, your exchange program, it's fine, it's good to learn about different school districts, but at the end of the day, when your IAR test scores, your math scores, your English, language, art scores are below 50%, that's dismal. That's terrible. I didn't see that anywhere on this agenda, especially in light of new testing that's coming up in March. What has been done to improve IAR test scores? What's the projection for test scores in March on new test scores that will be coming up? What impact? What have we done as a school district to, to improve our children's readiness for high school and beyond? And again, I'm looking at these test scores here, meet or exceed. They're dismal. I mean, they're below 50% for English and for math, and that's nowhere on your agenda. I haven't seen that anywhere today. So what we need to do is look through an academic lens and focus on academics. It's nice and warm and fuzzy to think of these other topics and learn from other school districts, which I think is fine. I don't have a problem with that. But you can't keep, you can't keep losing your focus, your academic focus on improving IAR test scores, and even math test scores, which are coming up. Why isn't that being discussed, Superintendent? Why, Ms. Jogi, has that not been addressed at this Board meeting?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pappas.
No, my time is, I still have time.
Oh, go ahead. Keep going.
So I reserve my time. Thanks. So that's important. I mean, I, I looked and I looked, and I spent minutes looking for this on our, on your agenda, and it's not there. So if you have any comments on the current status of our IAR scores and what's being done to improve them, I'd like to see them higher over 50%. I'll be, I'll be a happy camper if you can get them to 80, 70, anything above 50% some improvement. I know the, the state scores are dismal. They're very low relative to other parts of the country. It's just, I think a lot of schools are failing, and I just don't want to see the school district fail. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Oh, yes, we have more comments here from Sheila. Please join us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pappas kind of stole some of my thunder here. I was thinking along those same lines. Where are we with, it's nice that we're going to have a little kumbaya with District 88. I think that's great. But as teachers, you guys all went to the same education. You, you had to be, get your teacher's certificate in Illinois to teach, so I would imagine that District 88 is teaching pretty similarly as District 25 is. Maybe your audience is a little different, but your methods should be the same. With that in mind, the focus should be how to get our students above 50% in math and English. It's, it's appalling that our tax dollars are paying these delicious salaries for the union reps, for the administrators here at the school, and the education of the kids is not, it doesn't, it doesn't go along with that. It's, it's like the kids are being kind of second, secondary, and let's, let's like bend our ear to the political narrative. And again, I've brought this up before, DEI. Leave that alone and get back to math, reading, English. Get these students so that they're competitive, because that's what they really need in the world. They need to be able to read, they need to be able to discuss, they need to be able to challenge each other, to, to expand their brain, to be good citizens, and hopefully save this country and save this world from, from failing. I, I really am just surprised that there's been very little discussion about getting the grades up above 50% and all this patting on the back of what we can do DEI-y and not what we can do to help our students get past 50%. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Melissa, please join us again.
Hello, Melissa Kerr speaking. I was wondering, what was the dues that they are paying for the SEIU? How, how does that work?
Thanks, Melissa. Dr. Biden, we'll get back to you.
It's a percentage of their salary, or is it just a, everybody pays the same amount per pay period? You don't know?
Yeah, not that, yeah, Dr. Biden, we'll get back to you. We definitely know the answers to those questions. Thank you. We will move on to our, seeing no more comments, our future agenda items, which shows that the topic dates to be determined. We're going to be talking about cyber security on March 14, and we're definitely talking about student achievement and assessment following spring assessments, so we'll, we'll be talking about that, and ruler update and presentation in May, and a policy legal update coming up as well.
Madam President?
Yes.
So I just want to clarify the policy legal update, because I know in January, we talked about the library policy, and we were bringing back legal counsel. We wanted to bring it back legal counsel because we had some questions here. So is the March 14 session then to talk about the library policy with legal counsel?
Correct, yes. Our legal counsel has been working on it, was not ready for today, and will be coming up March 14. Thank you, Rich. Okay, seeing no other, you know, we also have the new topics, but seeing no other comments or questions, as a Board, we will be going back into closed session. So do a motion to adjourn to go back into closed session, please.
Sir, move.
Thanks, Rich. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Lana, can you please call the roll? Lana will call the roll, please.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichuk?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Thank you so much, and have a good evening for those who are leaving.